First thing we have is student recognition.
I'm gonna wait a little bit online because they're at.
Tonight I am recognizing a sweet student from fourth grade. Mrs. Knolls came up and presented this at a showcase and Julian Bradley, Julie.
Okay, so this is for you. Let me redo this. Miss Askew and Miss Plonson, I wrote you a call. So Jay is for joyful about her hobbies. This girl is very skilled in crochet. She'll tell you all about it. I is for incredibly loyal friend. L is for leading the way for others. She's an incredible leader in our classroom. The other L is for likely to succeed at anything she tries because you are good at everything you do. I stands for integrity above all else because she's gonna do the right thing whether I'm watching her or not. A is for always willing to help wherever it's needed, whether it's helping a friend who missed an activity or helping me file papers or running an errand. She is willing to do whatever I need. N is for never an unkind word to others. I've never heard anything negative from out of her mouth. And the second N, because Julian has two Ns, is not afraid to be herself. She's not ever gonna try to fit in. She's going to forge her own path and be proud of it. So at the bottom it says, Julian, we are so very proud of the young lady that you are. Your kind heart and patient spirit are refreshing to witness and experience. You have a very bright future ahead of you, girl. Love, Mrs. Knolls, Mrs. Askew, Mrs. Plonson.
Next is open forum. No one's done it for round number one. You guys are welcome to leave now if you'd like for the student recognition. Next is our super difficult.
I'm gonna start with some awesome. Thank y'all for coming, by the way. Thank you. PTO and our, don't wanna lump them together, but they're two great organizations that I don't talk about enough. Our PTO, that might be still an offender of the two principles, but they did a terrific job with our teacher appreciation weeks. They've got a lot of support that they did last week, particularly with build day and then coming up this week. And they'll offer some scholarships as well and reward those. And then our education foundation, most of you saw that that was a pretty awesome big production with teacher grants. There was an application process. They were able to award everybody that did apply. And that was over eight thousand if I'm wrong. A little over eight thousand dollars. And then they're gonna turn around next week and hand out four thousand in scholarships. So great job to our education foundation people. Always looking for support and help. If anybody out there that would like to get involved in either one of those groups, have at it. We're very appreciative to both groups. Construction update with elementary wing. They sheet rocked everything today. Looks a little different in there. They went ahead and put moisture barrier, drywall and everything that was taken out was put on to those guys by some woman sitting right in front of me again that doesn't wanna be recognized anymore. But he helped me line those guys up and Jared, thank you. Did you get a chance to go in there? Looks really good. Still got a lot of work to do. Been coming panic in eight elementary teachers and one elementary principal by dragging this out. But it's the construction world we're in and it'll be done. Be really nice when we're finished. Up next, they'll have some handouts. One is a map of how we're gonna be set up down there next year. That's pretty solid. As you can see, those eight rooms are full again. We're moving fourth grade and third grade back, or second through fourth grade back over there. The quotes that you have there in front of you as well are from Chandler Cabinets who did give us a school discount. I thought it was really reasonable anyway, but then they went ahead and knocked off nearly a thousand on that. Those will get installed on Friday. They don't mess around either. It was within two weeks of Jay's afar coming out that they had it fully designed and through. They'll bring them out Friday and install them. You can see the drywall people that started today are doing much more than just that. There's a lot of extra odds and ends that they've added to the bid. They'll also put the FRP board back up in the hallways. That's a pretty big necessity in an elementary school. And not cheap. They re-insulated where all the insulation was pulled out by Jared's group a couple of months ago. That's been aired out and we're good to go uncovering everything back up again. They're replacing all of the ceiling tile. If you remember, I've talked about the ridge cap down the middle. Jared fixed as well. Really glad he came a bit. The back was pretty well solid. Not to mention solid leaks. Not to mention there's insulation on top of the ceiling grid on the tiles. So that's a pretty big chore. It's gonna be really messy. But those guys that I saw working in there today will get after it, no doubt. Then we'll go from there. I think we're gonna be able to salvage a lot of the floor. It's obviously a big expense. Commercial clean it and then have professional job done on the tiles and stuff as well. Joey Mayo's been helping me with some connections there. Well, last but not least was keeping the water out of there. Jimmy Anderson, I've talked to him a few times, or talked about him a few times. He come in, remember he did the west side for free? And there was the bid that he did for the east side and then several other drainage problems that we had up here and at that elementary where it was holding water. And it no longer does, so sure appreciative of them. All, if all goes as planned, we will be wrapped up in about a month. Get everybody moved in and remember our summer is longer. So they'll still have a good six to eight weeks to go and do what they need to do on getting the classrooms ready. Next up, bus grant. Wish this was better news. Long story short, it was a pretty lengthy process to get everything turned in. I had very much optimistic feelings on one bus. I knew the other one was a long shot because we'd kinda let the registration lapse on it and hadn't been using it much lately. You can see the TCEQ letter there in front of us of why they denied those. They were both because they were not continuously registered for three years prior to application. Long story short, I have appealed that. I've been back and forth with them on emails. I've put those in there too. I know we got a little wordy, but I don't see why we were denied for a bus that was broken down. We ordered parts. The inspection expired during that time. It was broken down for that month. We took it within two weeks to go get it inspected and then registered and that's what denied the grant. So yes, that was a two hundred thousand dollar hiccup that we could've possibly gotten. That we're gonna have to find alternative methods to get at least one more bus. The two that we turned in for this grant are on their last leg, just saying the least.
Has the, I was reading through this and it's a good job on basically being persistent on the on page.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep after it. I called them again today. It's been phone tagged, but.
It kind of seems like, the whole point of this grant program is to get all the women, buses off the road. So it's clearly broke down. And so it would make sense that we should show them, make this apply.
Right.
It seems like they're really rigid on the guidelines.
Very much. They did change their guidelines. Big stream, so about three weeks ago, we get, never mind all the limitations of the number of buses that you could put into the clean school bus grant, just send in as many as you want. And that was the basis of my first argument at all. Hopefully they get to watch this and hear me talking about them. I don't know what their social media views are, but it's, somebody needs to hear it. I'll say it to them firsthand. If your goal is to get, I can call any of our stuff junk, but junky school buses off of the highway from the dangerous aspects of involving students, then at least hear us out and don't just send a stop letter on receipts we can provide for a bus being fixed. This was the timeframe. Here's the receipts. That's why it wasn't inspected. The other one, no excuses. We let it go a year. Should not have. It's actually the more valuable one. It's worth about a hundred and twelve thousand. Where the one that was just broke down for the month is worth about eighty-eight, so. Would that be enough to get a new bus? No, we would still have to find a way to come up with forty thousand or so to get a new bus. The wait time, according to numerous people that have been ordering diesel buses, I think I talked before about you can get cheaper ones and faster if you order a gasoline bus. I'd rather not. Let's get a diesel one. There was just, I forget which school district, they had a attendance meeting last week. May of twenty-five is when those buses will arrive on their district. So we still need to definitely be on the lookout for a good solid use when them get us by.
Have they replied? You just sent them a few emails, same day. I'd like to talk to Carmen or anyone. Have they replied to any of that?
Phone tag between she and I, yeah. She called late Friday. Brown's at. It's just kind of been back and forth, exchange of messages.
So when you did the re-rig, say it lasts for two months or so. Normally a lot of time to be re-registered, it just goes back. Whenever we did it, somehow I guess we re-registered at the new date, I guess. The registration thing would do.
Yeah, they had all of those records. We were told otherwise that that wouldn't come into play, but it did. They definitely did. Hate to talk so long about two hundred thousand dollars, but that's definitely. I know our county's doing everything they can to keep our roads up, but any routes that involves gravel roads or roads that have been paved that are just kinda falling apart, your buses are gonna fall apart within.
At least not for a black.
When it starts over for the time we've been, she said plenty of other options. I think you saw those. Retrofitted to propane, all different kinds of other exhaust add-ons that you can put on them now to make them safer. But not on a bus worth a couple thousand dollars, so.
What is she saying on the rebate grant program? She says one's gonna open up in the next month.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything on that.
Maybe something.
Yeah, absolutely. She did mention that there's not as many stipulations. School safety update. It's been a couple of months since I've given that. I'll open with her who did come. There was two dates that we said, when we got notification that we would have our intruder audit, there was two dates that we laughed and said, they'll probably either show up the day of build day with five hundred guests here and all kinds of stuff going on for our graduation night if you'd like to come in. And it was build day. So they showed up build day and thankfully, because of Kurt's diligence, there was no issues up here. Everything that was supposed to be locked was. There was a couple of doors that were unlocked at the elementary, but they weren't considered a violation because they were behind fencing. And that leads to, so thank you to them. That leads to cycle two of the grant that we're gonna have to upgrade some of our fencing. Put a lot of film on windows that we haven't done. I think I put that grant application in there. We get another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a guarantee if you'll just complete the grant, which we'll get it. But the majority of that is gonna be upgrade to fences. Put no climb on the chain link fences that we already have existing. And then our campus up here is beautiful. It brings in a lot of natural sunlight, but anything that's five foot or higher or lower has to be filmed. And that's gonna get pretty pricey, so. We'll work on that in the summer and the majority of that hundred and fifty thousand will be towards that. And then monthly safety or security report, I had to put in a couple of months either. You see the work done there. Those two guys are very much keeping us safe. Budget development. I should've said in the very beginning, Kurt Weisman had a couple of things come up last minute because she's gonna be up here next week for the budget workshop that does tie to this. Sandra has been out. She hopes to come back Wednesday. We'll have all of our budget amendments done, have a good preliminary budget, which has already been put in place and roll over from last year. All ready for that May thirtieth, six o'clock date that I think all of you said was good to go. And we'll get a lot knocked out well ahead of the end of June, which is where we pushed it to last year. I'd like to shoot for having everything done and ready at the regular June meeting instead of having a bunch of special meetings. Missed the, backtracking a little bit, I missed the cybersecurity handouts. This is very important. If you remember, our hackers got into our security cameras. That's very much a budget issue as well. Since all of that happened, I worked with Mr. Caleb. Mr. Caleb got free access through AT&amp;T. Sentinel One through DEA that's protected us a lot better than our just our mobile firewall and any kind of additions that we put in place for keeping our web stuff safe. The annex that I put the first few pages of, Kurt and Mr. Caleb worked on. The main reason I put that in the information for you is to know what all of those different things are. That's basically the introduction to our cybersecurity annex and the actual processes that we go through to get all of that. I'd rather not make public, so. So this is mainly just definitions. Back to budget development. I think we're gonna come in in pretty good shape. There's been some odds and ends, things that I'm gonna have to adjust for next year. Our function fifty-one maintenance and custodial through all of the different just random repairs that you can't really predict. We are gonna be out of whack in function fifty-one. That'll require a pretty good budget amendment. Preliminary stuff that has come in from the county. We have those documents as well. Just notice at the top. There's an initial letter from Sean Coker, our preliminary totals. Remember the main number you need to pay attention to is the very bottom right, freeze adjusted taxable. Essentially divide that number by a hundred, multiply times our tax rates and that's what we're gonna generate. It's down a million as it sits right now. When I initially was talking about this about a month ago, we were up about fifteen. Now we're down from twenty-three, we're down a million. Took weights to about eleven thousand dollars, so. That'll be ongoing. The official one's not due till towards the end of July. Also put a sheet in there of what we've generated, what the taxable assessed valuations were from twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty, all the way back to nineteen. Considerable jumps. I circled that on y'all's, but you wanna go down to mid-page taxable assessed valuation. So from nineteen, about a sixteen million jump to twenty. About an eleven million dollar jump on the total to twenty-one. Twenty-five million dollar jump to twenty-two. And then that big one, thirty-seven million from twenty-two to twenty-three. And then we're looking like we're gonna hold steady at about the same number for this year. And then the, nope, two more documents, sorry. Really exciting stuff. Y'all came just in time. I talked a little bit about this foundation school payment and the difference that was made up with that nearly three hundred and ninety million dollar addition that we got on to it a couple of months ago. We have three payments of seven hundred and three thousand, seven sixty-eight left coming in May, June and July. I'll talk a little more about this later, but remember no August payment because we're payment class one. So that leaves us with about two point one million dollars in foundation that we will live on between now and September first. So actually about September twenty-fifth. Because we won't get that first payment for the twenty-five fiscal year until mid-September. I'll talk some more about that in a minute when we talk about our refinances. And then the final document you have is just the latest version of our summary of finance. We talk about this a lot. I won't ramble on too much, but those of you that haven't spent much time, that first column, LPE is legislative planning estimate. Remember I say all the time on our numbers updates that we're paid on six fifty-one. Our district sits right now, I've got it at six forty-two on ADA. It's actually showing through the state at six thirty-nine, but that's because they don't capture data every month like we do. It should be about six forty-two, so we're still about seven or eight kids off as compared to about two hundred in the last couple of years, which adds up quickly, as we found out. Don't wanna get off too much into the weeds, but when you look at the tax rates on those, there is eleven cents of golden pennies, three copper. We've talked about the missing copper. We'll get into that later in that middle page. But I think it's a conversation to be had in the coming months after we process all of our new refinance of our existing issues. All of this, I'll wrap up by saying all of this stuff's online and we'll continue to work with Sandra and Dr. Weisman. I'll talk more about her plans for us later into the agenda. Everybody's good for May thirtieth at six on the budget workshop, right?
Hi. I jumped in and talked about these students and their director that are standing behind me. This is who we wanted to recognize. All of these students that are here participated in the state. UIL theatrical design competition. They all advanced. The thing that's impressive to me about that competition is it's not, it's another one of those that is not, oh yeah. That is not broken down by classification. They competed at the state level or all along the way against classes one A through three A. And we represented ourselves very well, or they represented themselves very well. We had Olivia Hall. She was at state for her costume design and she placed seventh in the state.
It'll be easier to do a big group picture at the very end.
In fifth place was our group design. That was Maria Culminaris, Blake Leoroyo, Liz Brett Frayer and Amelia Stripmadder. And then we had a state runner-up in her set design, individual set design, and that was Maria Culminaris. And we had a state champion, Caitlin Garrison, for her hair and makeup entry. Fantastic job by all of these young ladies, especially considering that's, this is the second year that we've competed in that competition. When Ms. Hurdle got here, a special shout out to her. That was one of the first conversations that we had was how do we continue to grow in all things that we do? She, we talked about having a congress team, set design, our theatrical design competition. And one thing to say about Ms. Hurdle is if there is a competition out there, she is more than willing to get someone entered in it and help them be successful. So shout out to her of getting students that wanna be involved and showing them an outlet to get involved. All of these young ladies participate in other things. They, most of them not, most all of them. At the same time that they were working on that, were also in the one I play, which advances the regional competition as well. So a big shout out to these gym ladies. Nope.
Okay, thank you for letting us interrupt. We're very sorry.
They were enjoying a fantastic theater banquet that was very well done, all done by the students. Great job, girls.
Good job.
Thank you.
Sure. As far as instructional updates and kind of overall principals reports to round out the year, I'm probably gonna talk a little more than I should as per the norm. Our enrollment right now at the secondary campus, we have a hundred, about a hundred and nineteen middle schoolers. That actually includes one enrolled today. And then we have about two hundred and twenty-nine high school students in grades nine through twelve for a total enrollment up here of three forty-eight. As far as what's going on around the campus, things that I've seen over the last couple of weeks in classrooms, when EOC testing wraps up, we have, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about our college graduates, but we have the end of the college year, so to speak. We still have those students here and are expected to keep going, right? I had several teachers come up to me this year. We did a couple of different things last year that they wanted to change, which is okay. And asked about some different things they could do in their classrooms, so I'm gonna go through some of that. Ms. Woodall with her math classes, she's going through a financial literacy course that she found online. It gets kids talking about, not super high level, but taxes and what to do with your paycheck and why your paycheck's not what you think it's gonna be every month when you get that job. Coach Martin, the other day, was teaching kids how to take their blood pressure. Mine came, my son came home and took my blood pressure. I think he was a little bit off because my blood pressure runs a little high and he, it was not with him doing it, but that's okay. But we're not talking just put the cup on and hit the button. She was actually showing him with the stethoscope and a blood pressure cuff. So that was, they really, really enjoyed that. They also, with the help of Nurse Neal, she's teaching some basic CPR to her kids and our students in biology as well as some of our eighth graders that are in health class. As far as English goes, they did a blackout poetry. Ms. Ballinger and Ms. Nevins really got excited about the Taylor Swift album that came out and got kids in here, had a whole get-together, I guess would be the best way to say that, where kids could come in and, there's one actually hanging on the wall, where they take something out of a novel and blackout different words and then the words that are left make a point. And our kids really, really enjoyed that. A large group of students and some that I would've guessed maybe wouldn't be super interested in that. Really, really got into that. Coach Burris in our government classes are talking about the importance of voting. They talked about kinda some mock election stuff and why it's important to get out and voice your, let your vote be your voice. Ms. Leverett was talking about chemical reactions and had the students making slime, which was, it's. reactions and had the students making slime, um, which was, it's elementary, a little bit as that sounds, really had our kids engaged and, uh, in more than just the making of the slime. There were lots of questions about, um, why it, some slime turned out, the kids were calling it better than others. I don't really know what makes good slime, um, but Ms. Leverett certainly does as far as those chemical reactions, and she could explain, uh, and have the students explain what, what went on there. Um, in our middle school steam, STEM class, they built roller coasters, um, as well as they had a unit where they built, um, a golf course, a miniature golf course, uh, and actually had to build the golf ball and the golf clubs, uh, that they used for that. Ms. Robinson was really excited about that. Uh, and then Spanish is kind of, has a culminating project going on right now, uh, that brings a little bit of everything, uh, that they've learned. It's mostly in their Spanish two class, uh, that they've learned in Spanish one and Spanish two, where they really get to speak quite a bit, um, as well as interact and, and, uh, with each other. Uh, but then also the flip side of that is something that I think is often missed, um, in, in that Spanish class, or in most Spanish classes, certainly not Ms. Love's, uh, is a little bit more of the history, um, some reading, some, some grammar that goes along with, uh, just learning another language. So, uh, really excited about what's going on in our classrooms and keeping kids engaged. Um, I'm not done yet. Uh, like I just said, our theater, uh, department, uh, when I played, advanced to the regional contest, uh, for the second straight year. Um, yes, they had high hopes of advancing back to the state, uh, competition and, and fell just short. They finished fourth at regional, which puts them in the top sixteen in class two A, uh, in the state out of about two-hundred-and-eight or ten, uh, two A schools that participated in One Act Play. Uh, at every single contest they participated at, uh, some, one of our actors or actresses received best performer. Um, we had numerous All-Star Casts, uh, members at each competition, numerous honorable mention All-Star Casts, uh, and then several tech awards along the way, um, that, that backward did. Like I said, uh, when they were in here, uh, there, there's really great things going on in that department. It's starting to grow, uh, and, and really get even more kids involved. Um, we had our, uh, like I said earlier, our Grayson College students graduated with their associate's degrees. There was twenty-one of those students, uh, that finished their associate's degree and finished, uh, graduated, uh, a few Fridays ago. Um, so they, they wrapped that up. Super proud of that accomplishment. Um, that, that's something that, that's, uh, not, I won't say unique to us, but I look around and, uh, the section that they had for the staff members of, of the schools, that, the high schools that were represented there, um, I looked around at some of the names of those other high schools, uh, high schools. You had Pottsboro, Sherman, um, some bigger schools, Dennison, uh, Anna, schools like that. And without a doubt, I don't have the data in front of me. Ms. Ballinger, uh, could share it with me. Um, but without a doubt, we're, we're the highest represented in number, not percentage. Um, if somebody wants to talk percentages, no, we're, we're obviously winning that too, but, um, we have by far the highest number of graduates, uh, each year at Grayson College, and, and that's something I hope we can continue, uh, because I think it's great for our students that are ready to go off, uh, and, and be, whether they're headed to a four-year university afterwards, uh, or they have the tools to enter the workforce, uh, or whatever their make, plan, plans may be. So I think that's , uh, really, really a great accomplishment, uh, for our students. Uh, we have several field trips coming up. Our seventh grade has already been on theirs. Eighth grade is coming up, uh, at the end of this week to celebrate the end of their eighth middle school year, so to speak. Uh, our junior class went to TWU, uh, the other day, uh, to take a kind of a college tour camp, campus tour, and, uh, look into some of the things that it requires, required to go ahead and, and, uh, start thinking about those post-secondary, uh, plans. They, um, the things that stood out to me that Ms. Nevins brought back was, uh, they actually talked a lot about the options other than college, uh, to, to our students, which I think is, again, is something that's, uh, that she huge for students to hear. Um, the other thing that was talked about was how respectful our kids were, uh, and how engaged they were in the actual conversation that the, uh, tour guide and, and presenters were, uh, as they were giving out that information. So, that's always great to hear how, how good your kids are doing. Um, this is, uh, the season of banquets, um, started tonight, obviously, with theater. Uh, I think there's something, some type of banquet every night this week. Um, it's always great. It's a very busy time of year, but it's great to celebrate, uh, what all of our kids doing, our kids are doing and, and what they have accomplished this year, uh, which is fantastic. I'll finish with this. Uh, we have nine students, I've already said this, but that have qualified for Nationals. Uh, I plan on recognizing them at the June meeting. Um, I already got with Ms. Crowe about that. Uh, we'll represent, or we'll get them recognized. Uh, that's a great accomplishment as well. Um, that's something, again, that has, uh, that FCCLA knows no classification. That is students, uh, competing against each other from all classifications, uh, and we're very proud, uh, of what they've got going on. Uh, graduation will be May thirty-first at seven o'clock in the gym, uh, with fifty-one graduates. That's all I got.
Danny, you wanna follow up?
Sure. It's, it has been another busy month as well. I currently have about three-hundred-and-forty-two students enrolled and my attendance percentage is only around ninety-five percent, if we could over. Um, we finished the month, at the beginning of the month, we finished the end of year testing. I don't know if that's taken care of, so we're waiting patiently on the scores, star scores. Uh, last week, or the first week of May, we had our teacher appreciation, which Josh has already mentioned, but the PTO did an amazing job and also a handful of other parents, they, they went overboard to go with our staff. So it was very well, very much appreciated. Uh, last week, we had, the fourth grade class had their marketplace in the cafeteria, and this is just a great fun learning lesson that they do every year, gives the students an opportunity to learn how to be an entrepreneur and manage their own business or, and, or being a customer, learning how to make a purchase with the budget that they're giving, given. So they have fun making their own little projects. And then, um, the whole, actually, most of the school came through and they could use fake money and purchase their projects, or purchase their little items. So it's fun for them. Uh, Shane Askew, she applied for a grant through the Education Foundation, and so tomorrow, third and fourth grade are gonna get to enjoy a presentation by the Mad Scientist. It's a worldwide program that brings life-size science experiments to the students. And so they will, uh, perform experiments and explain the science behind the experiment and help build knowledge, problem solve, and inspire the students. So that should be fun for the third and fourth graders. Last week, we had our book fair. It's our annual book fair, and we sold, uh, I believe, over sixty-five-hundred dollars worth of books last week, so it went very well. And Friday, we had a very successful field day with, uh, the FCCLA students volunteered. They helped organize it. They were out there with the students and, um, along with the PTO and some other parents, teachers and coaches. So, overall, it was very well done, very organized. Also had a handful of sponsors that helped and they, so each student was, was able to get a t-shirt for free to wear on that day. So, um, coming up, well, we have several field trips. I'm not gonna go into all the details, but at each grade level, it was involved in, in educational field trips and fun field trips. Next Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, we have our kindergarten graduation at nine o'clock in the morning. And then on Wednesday, we have pre-K first, second, and fourth grade award ceremonies. And on Thursday, we have third, fifth, and sixth. So, welcome to attend those. And then we have decided to do summer school at the end of the summer instead of at the beginning. So that will be July twenty-ninth through August sixteenth. Students will be there from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, and, um, teachers will be there from eight to twelve. So, al- along with, some of my teachers are doing tutoring throughout the summer as well, individual tutoring. And we're just, we're gearing up for next year already. Working on teaching assignments. Uh, I was looking today, so far I have about eighteen pre-K students that are wanting in and sixteen do kindergarten students.
Uh, the, Ms., sorry, I know y'all are sitting here and we talk, but, uh, summer school, we, high school or secondary campus is actually gonna, gonna stay, uh, with right after school, uh, right at the end of school, June third through the twenty-first. Uh, same thing Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty for students. Um, that, that prompted my memory there, uh, on that as well. So just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that. Um, and then, uh, one thing I did, it's on my notes, but I couldn't see it. Um, prom, had a very successful prom this, this past weekend. Uh, lots of, uh, students were there. Um, I would say, I, I think in last calendar, it was about a hundred-and-ten, uh, students that, that were, that were there. So that's a pretty good number. Um, and everything, everything went great and the kids had a great time.
You, you can come wherever. You need to be on camera though. You'd be welcome to sit there and she can catch you with her new fancy camera, or you can be Dr. Weisman for a minute. Flip that over for anyone that's tuning, tuning in right this second. Just, yeah, let's not make anybody confused. Thank you.
Um, just wanted to, uh, take a couple minutes and highlight how the kids in our program kind of recap our year and kind of preview, uh, what's, what's upcoming for us this summer. Um, I'll kind of start off with where I left off the last time. I'm a big believer that our success in the fall carried right over into the winter and the spring sports. Now in the fall, we were able to send a, send an athlete to regionals and cross-country. Uh, we were represented in playoffs in volleyball, and then we were able to win, uh, the first ever and second ever, uh, playoff games, um, in school history in eleven-man, um, football. Uh, so huge for us to be represented in those three sports and think that kind of spring boarded us into, uh, winter and spring. So I kind of wanted to real briefly kind of hit on all of those. Kind of starting with girls' basketball. Um, we were able to put together a fifteen-win season, which is a great, is a good first step. Um, finished with sixteen wins, which is a game or the year before. Um, we filled it, um, at different times, one junior high to two junior high teams. That's something we're looking to, without a doubt, improve on. Um, next year, we want two junior high teams, um, at, at the junior high level. Um, we were able to carry a JV team all season, and then, you know, the varsity there, a, a heartbreaker, a buzzer beater away from, from being, uh, being a playoff team. Uh, boys' basketball, just like the girls', were able to improve their win total from the year before. Um, our seventh grade finished as district champs. Um, eighth grade team, highly competitive. Um, we carried a highly competitive JV team all season. They, they won the outdoor tournament. They finished second in district. And then varsity boys, just like the girls', we finished, we finished one game, one game shot, um, of making the playoffs. Decent, pretty good first step for us. Um, next year gets a little harder, adding Slidell into the district, but we're gonna con- continue to pursue the program vision of being in the playoffs and being represented in the playoffs in, in every single sport. Uh, boys and girls powerlifting, very successful season. Um, every athlete set a new record, set a personal record, um, at every single meet. And that's something we preach to the kids, um, that we always wanna be going this way. I know I wanna take a step back and seeing them being able to hit a new personal record in all three of their lifts at every single meet is awesome. Um, we were represented, um, all the way to the regional level in powerlifting, um, with Junior Tyson Mount qualifying for the regional powerlifting meet. Tennis, um, another, another great one. Um, medaled in multiple singles and double matches in multiple tournaments. Um, and then just like powerlifting and cross-country, we were represented at the regional level, um, with Amelia Stripmadder and, and, and Miss Ballinger representing us there. Um, golf had another outstanding season. Uh, boys and girls, uh, had good showings in district. Boys team was able to advance all the way to area, um, and then with one, uh, individual, Sanders Safari, advancing all the way to state, uh, finishing in the top thirty out of a group of over, over a hundred. Um, baseball, um, a program that took a huge step forward this season. Um, had a full JV team the entire year. Uh, varsity went from eight wins the previous year to fourteen this year, and then the big one, uh, that went from three district wins to eight district wins, um, and we were in the playoffs. And again, that's a, that's playoff wins is, is ultimately the goal, um, but, but forcing a game three and being just a few runs away, uh, from winning a playoff series was a, was a big step in the right direction towards in baseball. Uh, softball, that was a lot of fun. Um, historic year for them. Filled it a JV team. Didn't just fill a JV team, they filled one that was, that was fun to watch. They were, it's an outstanding team, um, winning against a majority of their competition, winning against teams like Denton High. Um, our, our varsity advanced to the area round for the first time in, in school history, and heartbreaker, one run, one run away, uh, from advancing even further than that. Couldn't, couldn't be more excited to watch that program grow and what the future holds for them. Um, track, for a person who, who is a big believer that track is a direct reflection of your athletic program, it was a really fun, exciting year. Participation numbers were good. I'm gonna continue to build those on both sides. Um, through a combination of boys and girls, we advanced, um, from the district, we advanced to area in every single running event, um, and then multiple field events. We ran, we advanced to regionals in thirteen different events. Uh, we were able to send, uh, then two athletes to represent Taioga, uh, to put that tee in Austin, um, the state track meet. Uh, Junior Sam Martin, the four-hundred, and then freshman Kimma Woodley in the long jump. Um, we were also point zero-three seconds away from sending an athlete, uh, to Austin in the two-hundred, and we were point one second away from sending our girls four-by-one, uh, to state. So, really a fun year, um, especially with the, uh, the amount of kids that ran plus, um, the amount of young kids that, that not just ran, but, but stood out. Um, we were also able to break ten, ten school records, um, this, this track season, six on the boys' side and four on the girls' side. Um, wanted to finish up with two, two things right here, um, a little on the recruiting side of it, um, just because that's something we put a lot of stock into and something we really pride ourselves on, um, as a staff and the kids and just as a program. Um, you know, if we have athletes that wanna play at the next level, we're gonna do everything we can to provide them an op, to go and find them an opportunity. Uh, we had over ten total offers, uh, for this senior class. Um, not a bad, not a bad start for us. Uh, we had three athletes sign, um, on National Signing Day to go play sports at the collegiate level. Um, Amy Hilliard and Jonah Brooks signed to play football at Southwestern College in Kansas, and Justice Babbitt, um, signed to run track at, um, A&amp;M Commerce. Uh, we have a very special, uh, incoming senior class. Um, you know, they haven't even become officially seniors yet, um, and their group has already almost surpassed last year's group in the amount of, of, of total offers. We're sitting at ten total offers right now in that junior class, uh, between six, between six different kids. Um, National Signing Day was, was, it was a lot of fun, a lot of fun this year to see those kids turn their dream into a reality in front of all the younger kids, and we want to, uh, we wanna pack that jump next February. Uh, lastly, um, huge believer, summer is a time for programs to separate themselves from other programs, and that's, that's what we plan to do. Um, we wanna continue to trend upward, um, continue to separate ourselves. So, but we have a full, uh, full summer upcoming. Uh, we're gonna be hosting little kid camps for every sport, uh, throughout, throughout all of summer. Um, those start this week on Wednesday. Uh, we set up a ton of our high school kids to go out, um, to different college camps in Texas and surrounding states, uh, get their name out there, get our brand out there, get them as much exposure as possible. Uh, we have our summer strength and conditioning program, uh, that will be for every kid entering seventh grade through twelfth grade. That's gonna be, um, eight o'clock through eleven-thirty every Monday through Thursday all summer long. Um, we're in multiple leagues for different sports, all of May and all of June. Um, again, so just, uh, it's a huge opportunity for us this summer to take the next step and, and continue to, to make strides, uh, to our ultimate, you know, program vision, which is for us to be in everything that we do, uh, boys and girls, junior high through high school, um, and, and incorporating them littles as much as, as much as we can. Um, thank y'all for your time. Thank y'all, for everybody up here for everything y'all do for the kids and the school and the community. I truly appreciate y'all. Thank y'all.
Little bit shorthanded at times, but never made that as an excuse to, um, neglect anything to do with student athletes. You can say that for the whole district. It's no secret that we're shorthanded in a couple of areas, but, um, I never heard one complaint, and your coaches and yourself are just go get it done. So, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Discussion and interaction hours. Just get over.
I, I can talk a little bit on her words. I can straight up tell you, she's very thankful. for the community, just like we all are for the election turnout, wanna thank her for making those trips up here for those town halls and broadcast of them, she, she very much thought that was very productive. Her relationship with David Webb is, is decades old, she's building a good relationship with Jeff Golbus, obviously she's our advocate for the district at TEA. I could go on and on about, about those conversations that I get to have with her and Stacy gets to have some good ones with her as well regarding what she is the eyes of our district, reporting back to TEA on how we're, how we're progressing and I put some things in your packet that I normally put in, there's, there's a letter there essentially saying our quarterly review was done through the deputy commissioner of governance. Her placement will continue until she, I think it'll be up to her on, on when she stops. I think I mentioned last meeting that that's supposed to be through twenty-eight. A lot of that has to do with money owed to the state and our payment back to that. The timeline is essentially what was established a year ago, I think that'll adjust as we move through this plan, that we get to check off our different, different goals and accomplishments that, that she monitors and then they have, you know, they have meetings on us pretty regularly, that's the, two different departments that she works with, the governance down there and the financial compliance. Governance obviously being how things are being ran in district and the financial compliance are all the things that we've tried to improve and monitor better than what, what we have before, so she hated she had to miss, but looks forward to putting together some stuff to go through with Sandra and I next week at a workshop. Any questions on Dr. Weisman?
I told her she didn't need to sit.
She offered, I, I think we, we may end up calling her on a thing or two in closed session, but from what it says, being involved in open session, it might be. Home Star Governance, that ties right into Dr. Weisman as well, we've talked about that for several months, we thought we had some dates rolling that was gonna work, June twenty-first and then twenty-second, there's a couple of members that can't make that twenty-first, you actually. I'm gonna propose to her that we at least get in the twenty-second and then go from there. I, I put in your packet, if you haven't looked up, it's what all it involves, it's pretty extensive, it's two eight-hour days, we've talked about it before, the list of people involved through TEA is on that front page and then this is just kind of the synopsis of what it is and how it can approve, improve districts that are fully functioning normal all the way to ones that need some guidance in, in a few areas and that's, that's where we qualify. It was suggested by our visitors back in October for us to do this as part of our improvement plan through TEA and getting everybody's schedules to coordinate and finding the right person to do it. We are due to several months, but like to get that on your calendars at least for the twenty-second and if I can get word from through her tomorrow through the presenter, get that first day over with and then go from there on potentially maybe what a Saturday, another Saturday in July rather than...
Sunday work for everyone, it's either do Saturday and Sunday or do Saturday, Sunday. Maybe that weekend, Thursday, Sunday, Sunday.
All that's...
Everyone else is sleeping except for a hundred grand, so...
Instead, there's, there's some conflict in the twenty-first, so potentially doing the twenty-second and twenty-third if they wanna do that or just at the very minimum, getting that first day in and then reconvening. I don't know how much of it's split and referenced, so if they're gonna reference a lot from the first day and the second day, you wouldn't want a couple of months between it, but short review probably wouldn't hurt either, so we'll see what the options are. We do need to get it done, very similar to what the commissioner mentioned with the election back fifteen months ago. Not quite that long, but a long time ago, this has been on the table for a while and we need to get it, get it done. This manual online by the way, that's just a very brief part of it. One last thing on that, I've mentioned before, June seventeenth and going down for School Board University through Region Ten, that's a day of the week as well. I shouldn't say this, but I'm going to anyway, rather than spending twenty-five-hundred dollars down there with that, I would like to think that the Home Star Governance training would count towards some of our training as well, if not most of it, like I put an email to you last week, so if you have the seventeenth marked, scratch that, I would rather move forward with this Home Star Governance if I get a choice in it or not go to the seventeenth.
Was the seventeenth the thing on that region then? Is it free?
It's three hundred and fifty dollars per person. Twenty, twenty-four fifty for us, if we all win, if, if we don't all go, it's still twenty-four fifty because you're just getting one for free.
I'd like to maybe use a button.
Okay.
We love, love to talk instead of this.
Uh, that's good. Any questions on the governance? I don't know that I've ever, I know I have it, I don't recall in the last twelve years of talking much about our Grayson County Special Education Co-op. I think that's been a little bit of a learning curve for me, Dr. Holloway always handled going to those meetings, they meet once a month for a few hours and a lot's accomplished, a lot of good information shared, try to bring a lot of that back to the district. I think it's very much important for the community to understand that we don't provide those services directly to our students as a tile guy SD, there's currently eleven, will be ten next year, districts that, and some big conglomerate that operates as a co-op, we all pay our dues to, to be a, a member of that. Probably should've paid, I probably should've paid a little more attention on what that contribution is before I was watching everything daily, I'll get into that in a second, but the rates are gonna jump up a little bit. For my time, we lost Salina three years, maybe four years ago, they were out of our county, but they asked to be part of the Grayson County Co-op. They were there as long as I've been here and this year is the last year that Matt Alstine will be in there. You can tell the numbers from the chart, that first page that's labeled Grayson County Special Ed Co-op budget, that's very useful information. You can see very easily that Whitesboro will be more than likely the next out and they'll be functioning entirely with anything from diagnosticians to PT, OT, speech, all the different services that special education requires, those are all shared until you decide to go out on your own. We're, we're several years away from that in my opinion, it could accelerate pretty quickly, but the way it stands right now, this is very much important, an important function of every day, especially for them, you've heard me talk to them most times, our meetings and, and sometimes the six, seven hours that those commit to the principles they, they all, that, that staff is who operates that. Right now, the fiscal agent for that is Gunner, they're looking at, because they'll soon be out and they've done it for a very long time, thirty years plus. I think to be pretty frank, their people feel like it's someone else's turn to do that. A hundred and sixty employees work for the co-op this year and they handle all their insurance, all their HR stuff, everything that's vetted, goes through Gunner ISD along with everything that they normally operate with. Yes, they get paid seventy-five thousand dollars to do that, but it's a lot of work to keep and maintain, given our circumstances, we did not throw our name in the hat, that'll probably end up going to either Collinsville or Tom Bean in the future acting as the fiscal agent for our co-op. Our price, as you can see there, marked it, was just under three hundred thousand dollars that we commit to this each year. It will go up to nearly three fifty this year, about a forty-seven, forty-eight thousand dollar increase. As you can see in that far right column, we're by far the least increased, but it's all tied directly to that number on the far left. So whatever that percentage is based on your population of students served, that's what the contribution is. As you can see, we lost one million thirty thousand dollars from Matt Alstine this year contributing to the co-op and that had to be made up through staff movement, a little bit of attrition and future planning for that population to grow. As I've talked about before, when we took the dyslexia students and lumped them under the umbrella of special education, that's where these numbers started jumping pretty considerably. I think that's about it, other than just their budget, Matt Alstine's business manager, Renee Cho, does a great job, has done that and managed that for a long time. I sent the pay scale proposal to you along with a comparison of where the Grayson County Special Ed Co-op's at versus where we're at with our pay scale and then every other school that's involved with the co-op. We've already set our pay scale last month. I'll say again, just like I did last month, our years ten and less, I think as the years progress and us to be competitive, not just with the co-op, but with everybody else in Grayson County, we're gonna have to look at that a little closer when we get up to our veteran teachers, we're leading them back, so good job on rewarding experience, but those new ones that are just coming in, I'm afraid we're gonna continue to face a seven, or say four to eight thousand dollar difference that's gonna drive a twenty-two to thirty-two-year-old somewhere else, so. And that's it, unless you have questions on the last document that I had with our insurance charges, how that's going up, that factors in as well, particularly to the co-op. Got a little bit of that explanation from the Gunner superintendent today, he sent it out to all of us, we found out last Wednesday that they raised their insurance contribution for their employees to five hundred dollars. Because Gunner is the fiscal agent that raised all of the co-op's contribution to five hundred dollars, so that's gonna end up costing a couple hundred thousand dollars extra for the co-op, so good thing there's a surplus built, built into that budget. They've investigated, if it's truly a co-op, why can't we do an average of what all of the districts pay towards TR, or towards health insurance and that is not how it works, fiscal agent rules and co-ops, you go with the person that's in charge of your finances, so.